Commissioner Dorsey, if he would lead us in our prayer.
Let us pray. Our precious heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to live in the United States of America, the best country in the world. We thank you for the many men and women overseas who are protecting our great country as well as putting their own health and well-being in harm's way so that we may enjoy the freedoms that we have today. We ask that you be with the many, many women in law enforcement, first responders, EMS, fire, and everyone else who keeps us safe so that they may be home this evening after their shift. They get to see their families and we appreciate all they do to protect us. We ask that you be with each of us on the board to give us the wisdom to make the right decisions. And we ask that you be with each and everyone here as we go our separate ways later this evening after we conduct people's business and make sure everyone gets home safe to their families. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Let's all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome each one of you here tonight. We thank you for taking time out to come and observe county business going on here tonight on Tuesday, May 11th, 2021. First order of business is to approve the agenda.
We've got two changes, if it pleases you. 12C, the fire training ground discussion. We'll remove it. We need to do a little more work on that one. And the tent survey I laid in front of each one of you, that was tabled the last meeting and I failed to put it back in under old business, so we need to add it back in under 12E.
Make a motion. We approve the agenda as amended.
Okay, we got a motion in a second to amend the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five oh vote. All right, next on the agenda is approve the minutes of the previous meeting, the 427, 2020 regular meeting. Do we have any corrections or additions to these? If not, can we get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion and we approve 427 regular meeting minutes.
All right, can we get a second?
Got a second.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Teasley and a second by Commissioner Bennett. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor? It's five oh vote. All right, next minutes was a called meeting when we went and checked roads for paving for the LME project. So can I get a motion to approve these minutes?
I'll make a motion. We approve the 424 Kyle Road meeting.
Okay. Can we get a second?
A second.
Okay, we got a second by Commissioner Dorsey, a motion by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor? It's five oh vote. Remarks by invited guests, committees, committees or authorities? Do we have anyone? Okay. Next on the agenda is tax assessor quarterly report by Mr. Wayne Patrick, our chief appraiser, and David Thompson, the chairman of Board of Assessors. We appreciate you guys being here.
Appreciate the opportunity. You get to come here and follow me. This is actual disposal list from where the Department of Audits is coming in.
Getting ready to do their thing.
And this is our office's homework of going through and basically pulling out the sales we think don't qualify or doesn't belong in this study. And what I'm wanting to point out to you is out of a 201 sample study or sale study they pulled, there was 150 of those that we, our value was low on. And when you start to look through this list of 80 of these right here that we're pulling out of it, you'll see the majority of these is stuff where there was construction that happened prior to the sale. Basically, no permit was taken out or either it was in an area we wouldn't review in that year or what be the result from that. You know, had a permit been taken out on it, whether it was in our class of properties we were reviewing that year or not, we would have followed up on that permit and picked it up and it wouldn't be a question in this study. To sum this deal up right here, when we look at what's left on the study with this removed, our ratio comes in at 34%, 34 and a half percent. As you know, we got to be above a 38% or the utilities are going to be assessed at whatever ratio that is that comes in. And can get very costly very quick on that, especially if it was down there around 34%. We was around that same percentage last year. We recommended a nine and a half percent adjustment for the market conditions during that time of when they pulled the sales in the January 1 of that year. And that got us over, just barely over the 38% and we was good for last year. Right now, it's going to take a 10% adjustment, which is in line with what we asked for last year, to get it to a 3814. And that's probably what we'll be recommending when we will, you know, sit down with these guys to talk to them, so. But the problem is still this stuff that's being done out there with no permits. And I got a few examples here. I know you guys have seen a lot of this occurring. Give you example of this one. This right here is a double Y trailer. Right there is what it looked like when we was out there looking at it. Probably this 85, $80,000 has been spent on that and there's no permit at all on it. This is one example. Actually, when I pulled up on this one, I was going to get with my guy that's picking up the new construction to get him to come out and pick a house up. And I said, well, hold on a minute. I got to look and I seen the vents underneath it there and I said, ah, never mind. This is a mobile home that's been completely gutted. That's, that's an example.
You didn't find a permit anywhere for that?
No, this one right here either. That's, that's the top copy of the house that we was looking for. And the one behind it there is, this is the backside of it.
That's the backside of that house.
But that's what it looked like when we got out there. There was no permit for anything on that that was done there. This one right here was very interesting. Y'all see that one down there? Kind of looks like a garage. That's actually a house on the lake. That's the backside of it. And you look on the inside of it, tongue and groove pine. It just trimmed out to the nines. Very, very nice. But we didn't have none of that. That was a 60 by 24 carport there with it and about a $40,000 dock. And none of it had been turned in or anything. Two parcels down from that one was a parcel where we had had a permit in 2018 for a garage. This is the house we was looking for. This is the way the house looks now. And there wasn't work done on the garage. There was a two-story garage built. But we had followed up two different times on the garage permit. Nothing had been done. And then we was out there this year on the review and all that. That there had been done. Between these two houses, this old, this rustic-looking one and that that I'm showing you, they was over $300,000 value on two parcels right there. It'd been missed over the last two years. That's just two parcels.
And you do go back and reassess this, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it was, these is not the same value when I left them as it was when I pulled up on them.
Michael, you have to understand that we assess property every three years.
I know.
So, I mean, if we have a permit, we can go back and assess it, but we can't just go out there and pick and choose, you know, houses because it's been remodeled. Unless we know there's a permit been issued on it, we can't go out there and look at it again.
Well, how much manpower would it take to assess these houses every year?
Well, that's what I was going to get at on that because, you know, we're looking at the lake properties this year. So if something comes up and somebody calls us about a parcel down here in rural county and say, hey, somebody's built a house down here and they got no permit on it, well, we can't single them people out because we're not reviewing that class this year. And so it's going to be, it could be another two years before we get back to that property class and pick all that stuff up. By us looking at this stuff every year, we'd be getting everything. Whether there's a permit or not, we'd be seeing every parcel. Because what I want you to get lulled into, when you, when you look at this study right here for the Department of Audits, you may say, well, you know, that ain't but 80 samples right there. That's 80 samples of what they pulled that sold. The majority of the stuff that's out there, a lot of the stuff is getting, the county's missing money on revenues on, it ain't been sold. This is stuff that people have been, you know, remodeling and doing work to and stuff and it's out there and that's countywide. I'm talking about a few parcels right here that I'm showing you examples of. But this problem, I'm telling you, every other house we go to, there's been something done to it on the lake, you know, this year. And it's, and it's same thing countywide or in the cities. You know, City Hartwell does pretty good on their permitting, getting those copies of stuff that happens out there so that, you know, fair little stuff's missed for what goes on in the city. But countywide, there's a lot of revenues being lost. Answer your question, I talked, I've talked, we met with Mr. Marshall and he asked us, you know, what we thought a fix to this would be. And if we could, if we could see every parcel every year, it would fix this thing. I believe it would. And I think with four more people, it'd give me seven guys that'd be in the field all year long. I could split up about 2,500 parcels per appraiser. They'd be looking at the same 2,500 parcels every year. And nothing, you know, nothing would be overlooked and missed in far as what's being done new construction-wise out there.
Well, the rest of my question was what would it cost?
Once they're appraiser twos, and I'm assuming hand-me-down vehicles, you know, stuff like that, it'd still be under $200,000 a year for the four, four people in addition to where our budget is now.
Yeah, how much you figure it'd be worth? Did you miss it?
Well, I'm talking $300,000 on two parcels right here.
I heard it.
You're talking about that value, not revenue?
No, that's value.
Right, so let's make sure. We only get 27% of the taxes paid just.
But if we pick everything up that's out there, it's going to be taxed on every year. In addition to what we pick up next year, the year after that.
The year after that.
And it's, I think it's important too to keep in mind, Department of Revenue wants us looking at every parcel every year anyway. In most cases, you know, it's not usually feasible, you know, for county budgets and all to have that many people out there to do that job. But a lot of counties are turning to that now and putting the people out there to do their in-house reviews.
How many you got on staff out there now?
There's eight of us. No, seven of us. Four give us 11.
Let me expand a little bit on what Wayne said here. In my opinion, and being involved in the, in the board and all that stuff, is the building permit in this county, the process in this county is broken. It's either, we can, we're offering you a fix to this that we think is a world for the county. Either you guys can fix this building process, which I don't think you can do it. One reason is you're limited to $1,000 on fines. Nobody in this county has ever had a fine that I know of. I mean, if they have, they never paid one that I know of. I know them. And so, you know, and you're limited to $1,000 when somebody owes, they upgraded their property and they owe $2,000 and they only had to pay $1,000 fine. It's no brainer. Hey, I get no building permit. You know, why should I? You know, I'm just going to have to pay $1,000 fine three years down the road. That's the way it is right now because we do it every three years. So, so that's part of it. The other part of it is, is when the Department of Audit looks at this list, if I worked for the Department of Audit, I would look at that list right there and I'd say, this is not a state problem. This is a county problem. And the county needs to fix this. We're not going to throw out any of these properties. And they don't have to throw out any of them. I mean, they can look at this list right here and say, we're not throwing out any of these. And if they do, we're going to end up at 34 or less because there's on the, on the utility. That's why I told you, Joe, back last in January, that we can't tell you what the Department of Audit is going to pick. We can't do that.
I understand. But I also know that if the revenue, if the ratio is below 38, that's going to cost us money. One of the things here, and I don't think that we've got into this and I think we need more detail here. Our building permit ordinance says a building permit is not required unless you change the existing roof line or existing foundation or general physical characteristics. So when you look at the ordinance and you look at some of these, now the examples you guys gave us here, building permits should have been required for every one of those. And if we see these things going on, and we're going to talk about this later on tonight, that building permit is on orange paper and it is supposed to be clearly visible from the road.
I've never seen one displayed on the road.
And that's what the ordinance says.
I know what it said. I've seen a few. I haven't seen any.
And we're going to talk about this later on tonight now that Randall Graham has moved into code enforcement full-time and is no longer doing part-time EMS stuff.
Yeah, Randall, Randall's still very much needed. You still get a building permitting process. You need.
And there is a process out there. It's just not followed. And until we hold people accountable and we get serious about it, we've got to get to the point where we have a zero tolerance policy about a building permit.
Well, you know, even, even then, Joe, if you, if you say, you know, you have a zero policy on all this other stuff, you're only, still only able to divine $1,000.
Right, and that's state law. There's nothing I can do about that.
You're going to make more money, what we're proposing to you, than you're going to, than you're going to make with what you're.
There's a lot of revenue being lost in county.
Yeah, I mean, tons of revenue is being lost because this county has grown like crazy. I mean, how many sales did we have last year?
In mid-April, there was a little over 800 so far and then she checked it again the end of April, two weeks later.
Talk about this, that's issue.
Yeah, it's just the other day she checked it with that two-week period. There was another 120 during that two-week period.
We're talking about 920 sales up through the end of May.
You know, probably last season, last year, that's what we had. I think there was 1,300 or something like that transactions. So we on the pace to pass after this year.
So you had 1,300 total last year.
That's total.
You already had 920, three months.
Four months. Right, that's everything. That's not, that's not just.
That's countywide.
If that's, that's deed gives or full, that's everything that transpired so far. Not all of them can be. But see, we had about, we had about 900 sales or so that we're using in our study for the Department of Revenue, ratios that we put to present to these guys so we can send assessments out. Department of Audit's only selected 200.
So let's say we give you the four people. What's the guarantee and embedded test that you're going to pick up these houses that are remodeled on the inside? Because that looks like that's where a lot of these are.
Yes, 10, that's 1 to 10, actually. I'm not there in that world. For every new house, there's 10 interior remodels.
And you can't go on the inside of the house. I mean, this is.
A trained eye can see that immediately. When you, you'll know, and also there's MLS listings and things like that. But a trained eye, you can tell when you see a house, if it was sitting there at 50% good before, on our records when we pulled it up and you look up and you're already saying, hey, this house is 70, 80% good. And we make that effective year adjustment to get it to that, you're, you're taking into consideration that something's been remodeled on the inside of the house. But it has to be physically looked at, you know, to see those things. If you've got these individual guys looking at their 2,500 parcels a year, they can pay more isolated and, and, you know, they can, they can look closely, more closely at what their, their project is every year and see those things. Where the, you got one person like me that go, go look at 900, I mean, 9,000 parcels in rural county. I mean, I'm limited as to what I can do by myself out there doing that review. But you get seven different people broke up on the parcels. They're going to be able to isolate and look a little bit closer and more fine detail with those things every year and see everything.
But the interior remodel, not changing the footprint or nothing, or the roof lines or nothing else?
It changes value though.
Yeah, I understand, but it's going to be hard to see that.
Sometimes it is, like a finished basement or something like that. It's sometimes it can be hard to even go around looking and you can see sometimes in the windowsill where there's finished sheet rock or something like that. But then you can estimate, okay, was this a daylight basement or is the whole thing finished?
You're peeking in the window, somebody may shoot you.
Yeah, we don't do that. No, we don't do that. But there's, there's different things that you look for, that you learn to look for and there's going to be some training involved with, with who we pick. But, you know, we wanted to offer up this and, you know, slinging it to you guys, see what you think about it. We, we think it would be a definite fix and a benefit to the county because they have revenues that.
Why can't we, we're in the budget season, so to speak. I mean, we're fixing to start working on our budget next month. Figuring out your budget, what it would cost. I'm not saying we'll do it. I'm just saying, let's see what the actual numbers are as far as in a budget.
Before we get to that point, I'd like to see this data broken down further to see a house remodeled prior to sale, no permit, remodeled picked up for 2021. Is it something that our current building permit ordinance requires a building permit for? And I've since learned in some situations like Bowersville, for example, there's been some stuff done that, and I don't think they share building permits on everything with us. I know Hartwell does. They share everything good reciprocal. But I don't know about Cannon and Royston. Do you have issues there as well or?
Cannon doesn't issue, I know of.
What about Royston?
Royston does. We get permits from them. Here's a problem in my mind, Joey, in this. The $2,500 threshold that you guys give for somebody, a value, if it's, if it's under that, you don't have to get a permit. The value, which opinion between the people doing something, going in and remodeling the kitchen and end up doing the whole house or what have you versus what we'll see when we finally get around to that property class and look at it? That, that's the problem. And I don't, I don't know how you can, you can fix that with just a permitting process. And I think it's fixed with us looking at everything.
That's what I want to see. I want to see what's truly, if somebody got a building permit, would truly trigger the process? And I want to see what wouldn't trigger the process.
And these issues where somebody bought a permit back in 18 to build a garage on that and I showed you that on an example a while ago, when I followed up on it two different years and nothing was done. And then this year in the review, I pick up a whole remodel and house and everything that's out there, you know, another 120 something thousand dollars of value on that one right there and they did get a permit.
And that's another thing. How, what's the expiration date on our permit?
One year.
One year.
So, yeah, so that permit was invalid.
And they're also responsible to let them know when they've completed it.
Yeah, well, if they take out a permit, it's wrote on there when they sign it that we're going to be inspecting the property at some point and look at it. And it don't matter if it's where it's at in the county, if they get one, we're going to follow up on and look at it whether it's in our property class that we're reviewing that year or not.
Well, Joey, what I might recommend, if you're interested in breaking this down a little bit further, if you, you know, Wayne and myself, we'd be glad to meet with you anytime. We'll go over any evidence you want to go over.
Well, I'd just, I'd just like to see what would trigger.
You know, I mean, right now, we don't have time in the office to break down all that stuff to, to give you.
But there's, there's another element that's, if you're in a, in a county where the magnitude of what's going on is much less, this really is not an issue. You can get by with continuing to do the proper reviews every three years away when we're building them. But when you got what's going on, the dynamics with the market here in Hart County right now, you got so many people that's flipping these houses. They buying these older houses that's already here, going in and doing this stuff and turn around and selling them. And that, that's the difference. And there's a huge market for that here right now. And these, these things are selling lots of, what do you say? Well, well, how much is that when they made application on?
I'll say.
I mean, and it's, you know, it's, it's crazy because there's a shortage of inventory of houses in Hart County.
Charlotte, it was last, last couple of weeks ago, there's over 34 houses in the county for sale.
Yeah, that is, is crazy. But again, you know, it's going to take, it'll take some changes in management on my part in there to, to change around a little bit how we structure, what, you know, different appraisers do. But we can, we can fix it to where we can have seven guys in the field all year long and it'd be, I'd leave four in the office to carry on day-to-day functions that go on there. And I believe we can manage this thing done. It'd be a little bit rough the first couple of years with getting people trained and making sure they're doing about the job that it should be, like you're talking about, you know, making sure they're seeing what they need to see out there. And it was a big control on my part on that to make sure that's happening. But I believe it would be a fix, a fix to this in a lot of different areas. Because again, it's bigger than what this Department of Audit's report is showing. It's much bigger than a countywide issue.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I got a few questions. Is there some possible way to do a pilot program to see how it would work? Is that doable or?
Well, I think we're already doing that.
How would you do that?
Well, I know. That's what I'm asking y'all, is it possible to do?
Well, I mean, if you hire an appraiser, you can't, I mean, you don't hire them temporarily for, you know, you got to send them, you still going to have to send them to training. You're going to have to get Level 2 certification and you're basically, you know, after say a year, you're going to let them go because you don't need them anymore. I mean, it's, it's, that's kind of hard to do.
You know, a lot of counties hire companies to come in and do the reviews. This county knows that didn't, that didn't go well at all when, when that happened last time. And, you know, I think there's a lot of dynamics of why it didn't work. But, you know, we, we would be handling this in-house, reviewing everything every year. We'd be there to defend it during the appeal time as well. You know, and I, we're already got the project, the product out there, Ricky. It's just on a much lesser schedule. We're doing the same thing. It's just over three years instead of doing it all in one year every year.
What would it do to hire two people? What would this do?
We'd have to decide what we were going to look at in one year, what we'd look at the next year. And you're still kind of leaving one year out.
Still going to miss a year.
Yeah.
You'd probably end up with two years.
More than likely a two year.
Problem is it's a year after before you find it usually.
We already a year behind anyway on how we do things.
We're not, I mean, we're talking about each person doing 2,500 parcels a year. That's a lot of profit.
It is, I know. It's a lot of work.
There's over 17,000 parcels in the count.
17,200.
How long does it take them to get to be a appraiser two? And what you said?
Well, it used to, about six or eight months before COVID. They just now opening some classes back up that they can physically go to. A lot of this stuff's been online. Some of the classes they won't do online because of the importance of how the exams are carried out and everything on them. But they're starting to open them back up now, but probably less than two years. They should have an appraiser two on them. But I think after. But, um, I think after, after the first year of going out with the guys and, you know, having everybody, you know, knowing what they're looking at, seeing what they're doing and getting some feedback from them, I think after that first year, I think things will start kinda clicking. You know, Zach that's with us now, he's doing an amazing job for us now in his new construction. I mean, he is, he's kicking, he's on the lawn out there every day. Uh, he's still got the knowledge to come in and ask questions if he needs to about things and, and stuff like that, but, um, he's been with us about two years, you know? So it takes, it takes somewhere along about that, you know, cause very seldom gonna get people to come in with the knowledge, you know? Sometimes do, sometimes you get people that's got, you know, appraiser certification already that can come in and kick right off. Uh, but, you know, we can't assume that that's gonna happen, but, um, I'd like to have the opportunity, you know, we're gonna do this, and then I could go ahead and try to be recruiting and looking at some folks and talk to some people about it between now and October, you know, for that next year and all too, so.
Well, training people, you say two years, wouldn't it be more profitable to hire, just look to begin with for a certified appraiser?
We can, and we can, you know, we can.
I mean, you're gonna make your money in the first two years.
Yeah. Um, the trouble, you know, you get into what they're being paid somewhere else versus what they're being paid here kinda thing, and, you know, we've looked at that time and time again, we talk to people. That's one thing, we've lost a little bit of communication because not going to some of these classes and seminars because of COVID, because you used to talk to people that say, hey, I see y'all got an opening and stuff like that, you know? We can start talking to them about something that is coming and kind of recruit some people to come in and what have you. But that don't mean we can't, you know, get with the state and they'll send an email out to, to all the counties across the, you know, state if there's somebody in the area that's interested, that they may, they may come and talk to us, and we can, we can do that. It'll cost us nothing for them to send an email out to a different county.
I know, I know of one that lived in Hart County that was actually, does that for a living.
Is it mass appraisal for tax assessment or is that fee appraisal? Cause it's two different things.
Mac and mass.
Okay.
Uh, you know, speaking of that, I guess the last time that we had a job over there, how many outfits? We had four, had four outfits, so it's pretty hard to get somebody.
He, he travels a lot, he might be willing to settle down here and do it, but I don't know.
We'd be interested in talking with him if we, if we're gonna go this route.
You know, I sort of agree that I'd like to see how mu- more revenue it'd bring in. I don't know if that's possible or not. Um, you said it brings in the value, but how much would the revenue be?
Well, I mean, all you gotta do, you go out there and look around the county, see what's going on right now.
I understand that, I see it every day, but.
Yeah, it's, it's kinda hard to, I guess, what the revenue would be, yes.
We added about a hundred and fifty million dollars to the digest last year, just in the one-year review and the normal new construction and stuff like that that we added, you know? And that's, there's a lot of stuff that got left off that we find in this year, stuff that was out there that probably would about double that figure just on the lake view, you know? So it's, it's gonna be a tremendous amount of value out there that, that would be picked up.
You also gotta be cognizant of the fact that this economy cannot continue to sustain the growth that it's doing. It's eventually gonna have to slow down, and you start hiring four people and spend a lot of money training them and then not have anything for them to do.
Well, they still have something to do, don't they? They have twenty-four hundred profit they gotta do.
But I think it's a lot of slow down.
I don't, I don't disagree with you, Joey. I don't, I don't, I mean, it's just like, and that's something needs to be thought about, but I don't know where that is.
That's why I'd like to see.
How much revenue would be lost between now and then?
That's why I'd like to see the breakdown. If somebody got a building permit in compliance with our current ordinance, would we have called it? What's the revenue lost there? And would we not have called it? And what's the revenue lost there? That's, of these hundred and fifty or so samples, that's what I'd like to see.
And there, there may be other avenues that we could talk about. Building inspector could be a, a, a way of going around this, uh.
He's not gonna catch them remodels though.
Huh?
He's not gonna catch them interior remodels at all.
Why not?
Well, you gotta get a permit.
He's gonna have to get a permit, he wants.
People ain't buy permits.
I think that's the whole concept.
That's where the whole problem is at.
Ain't no permit getting being got.
But I'm just saying, there may be other ways that we can look at this.
Right, yeah, we just wanted to offer up some guys.
I appreciate the discussion.
No, it's, it's good talk, it's, well, we're just trying to see, you know, what, what would we see just where we're at?
I think you still need, you know, something to go with, with building inspection personally, but I, I think they, I think the value of looking at everything every year is gonna be well over what, what our budget's gonna be for having those guys out there.
Now, you're talking about, uh, you know, they got a lot of people that do the stuff in there all themselves and, and, and out themselves, and they'll never catch that, you know, with the building permit process, they don't get a building permit.
Well, if you can pick up more than two hundred thousand just by bringing them in, they're paying their own salary.
Yeah, that, that would happen in one of the twenty-five hundred area parcels.
Right, they're paying their own salary.
Yeah.
Well, I'd want to do. I tell a lot of people around the county, and I really believe this, is, you know, Lake Hartwell, we, we've got a unique situation in Hart County.
Right now.
Most other county, right, well, even, not just right now, I think it's gonna continue. And, uh, but, uh, this lake is the only lake in Georgia that still has building sites that are developing on the lake. And we've seen a tremendous amount be in California, New York, or Atlanta, all over the place coming in and buying a property and, and developing, or either, or either building or remodeling or whatever. And, uh, so the, uh, Hart County is, you know, the only lake left, you know, when near is full, there's no more dock permits, and so if you buy, when near is gonna buy something, it's already there.
And it is a nice area to live.
And working. So, I mean, it's, it's, I think it's, uh, one of the treasure that, you know, that we've got that, uh, that most counties don't have, you know?
That brings up another question. Whenever we approve a subdivision and development, do we make sure that they get the permits on each one of those houses?
No, that's on our plus.
Now, your permit taken out to the property owner to decide to build on.
Well, I know, that's what I'm talking about, but we, do we follow up on that? If we, if we.
For female lawyers in our judicial circuit. She was not necessarily the very first one, but she was certainly the first one who had a very active trial practice. Margaret was scared of no one and believe you me, she would go to court and she knew what to do. And I have to say, I've had my share of whippings by her, although I have whipped her a few times as well. But Margaret was a person that we should remember. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gordon. County administrators report.
Just to let people know that may not have heard, the governor issued another state of emergency executive orders today. Basically, what the gron of this one was is relaxing the trucking laws, their time the drivers can spend on the road and the wait they can haul for fuel. No fuel trucks has to go through wake stations, stuff like it. And also, another section of that was price gouging. So the price gouging code has been put into effect on gas products. And we don't handle that locally, that's a state thing.
And it's going on too.
Yeah, it is.
What's going on here in this county?
Yeah, like I said, and again, public feel like it being gouged on price on gas. You can call, I don't have the number in front of me, but you can call the governor's office.
I watched one jump thirty cents a gallon yesterday.
Well, I mean, thankfully, locally, we don't have the...
We will be making some phone calls. It's not right.
If you run through the governor's office, there's a line there who'll get into attorney general's office. And they take care of the price gouging from the state level. Then I got the financial report.
Let me ask you another question. Didn't they remove the fuel tax?
Correct. Fuel tax has been suspended for the next thirty days too. So that should kind of offset the price of gas.
And people need to not panic. That's what's going on right now and driving this up. Everybody's worried, they gotta get gas, they gotta get gas. That's what's doing this. And if the news had taken advantage of. If the news had to flash it all over the world and everybody went on with their normal life, nobody ever realized it happened.
You went three days before everybody started buying. Kind of like the toilet paper issue last year.
Exactly.
I understand that.
All right. Hold on a second. Let me see.
Go there, back there, go across.
Huh?
Up at the top, you two bar come very top.
I do.
Top row.
Oh, back there.
There you go.
Revenue. Revenue for the month was six hundred and forty seven thousand two seventy-seven, which was on here. We expect then to call the profit tax ten eighty-seven again. We're expensive with one million twenty-eight thousand one hundred and three, which was then a little under budget. It's given, it was three hundred and eighty thousand nine sixty dollars, still have surplus thirty-three million four and eleven thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars. Profit tax, uh, came in at thirty-three thousand sixty-four dollars. Uh, loss was two hundred and ninety-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars EMS collections, a hundred and two thousand twenty-three dollars. And, uh, David, the vehicle tax was a hundred and sixty-two thousand seven hundred and six dollars.
Very strong local economy.
Yeah, people still buying cars.
Very strong. I think that's a record LOST collection.
Again, for the year there, we're set at forty percent over on budget, which is normal. And, uh, on our expense budget, it's forty percent over. We have Paines Creek. Another month of April.
Another good story.
Revenues for the month were two hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. Expenses was sixty-nine hundred and forty dollars, which left us an amount of seventeen thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars for the month and the year, with a hundred and four thousand nine hundred and two dollars for plus. And make one note here, we did return the twenty-five thousand dollars to the general fund we used for the seed money to start. We felt comfortable enough, we got the money to do the budget, so we transferred that twenty-five thousand back into the general fund account. So it's been made whole. Any questions over this? And I believe, I looked this afternoon, and our occupancy for the month of April was about seventy-six percent.
So this model is by far much better than what the Corps was doing.
And honestly, we've cut overhead expenses tremendously from what the Corps was paying. And when you deal with the federal government, a lot more red tape and stuff that they go through that we don't. So that was to be, I hoped it would work out that way, but anyway.
Good job.
That's all I have.
Could you give an update on Paines Creek or any...
Paines Creek?
I'm sorry, Milltown.
Oh, Milltown. Uh, we're hoping to open up first June at Milltown. I've had, uh, some extra people in and cleaned it up over the last two weeks. It looks tremendously better than it did. What we like now is the guardhouse. We've had to replace all the windows and it, uh, the cable company should be getting their phone lines and internet service in within the next week or so. But we're shooting for June the first to open up and see what happens.
Now, when you say internet, is that gonna just be the guardhouse?
That's just the guardhouse.
And cables?
They gotta get, they have access to our computer program to do the booking and all.
So they'll have Wi-Fi?
No, no, not in the park, not in the park. No, that's just for operations inside the guardhouse.
It's a primitive campground.
Yeah, it's primitive campground. We've replaced, uh, so we got, I think, six picnic tables we gotta rebuild or replace. And I think it's already been done.
You know, there's a bunch of them laying over at Paines Creek you could pull out in the woods and put over there.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna open up some more Paines Creek too when I get through this thing. We got some off to the lake, we're gonna try to open up Paines Creek.
That's a good thing.
Because we was completely full this past weekend, and I think the next several weekends, we completely full up there.
That's good.
But again, hopefully, hopefully Milltown will be up and we'll see what happens. I'm not, I'm still not sure what the market is for primitive camping, but we'll find out before long.
Why don't we go ahead, since we're talking about Milltown, let's start talking with the Corps about changing that campground.
Right, I've had...
That's a beautiful place.
It is.
I wouldn't have known what that is.
I have, I've had, I've had some, you know, individual conversations with the folks I deal with all the time, and I don't think it'd be a problem. They want a pretty precise business, not necessarily business plan, what we plan on doing, uh, to be sure it fits in with our big scope of things around the lake. And I talked with the Rosanna today with the archway. And we're gonna talk some more tomorrow to get our engineering students to come in and do us a rough draft of what, you know, if we put power, if we put water, we're gonna have to reconfigure the campsite, because the campsite right now are too small for the camper people's got nowadays. So all the campsites would have to be reconfigured to get us an idea from our engineering school, what would be involved in doing it, and kind of sort of guess estimation of the cost. So those things are into working, that's, it'll take several months to work over. But we are looking in the background. Now, if I get some idea like that, then I got something substantial to go back to the Corps and say, look, we're interested in doing so and so and so and so.
You know, you could set that thing up if you see a market for primitive one side, it'd be primitive.
That's true, that's true. We can look at all our options. Uh, as we go.
That's got about a prettier view anywhere on that lake.
It is, I would say it is. It's the best view on any park I've been in on the lake. I mean, you got a full view on the one side, that was the main body, the dam, everything. It is pretty. But that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. Now we're coming down to Chairman Ford. I'd like to say congratulations to our Hart County High School baseball team for making it to the Sweet Sixteen. They've done a good job this year, and also, the Anglers won a big tournament in fishing over the last couple of weeks. But a lot of good things going on in our high school, our youth sports and all. And also, I attended the, along with Commissioner Dorsey, we attended the Skeeter Bass Tournament down there. Some of y'all, others may have went, but, uh, but a hundred and fifty-four boats, I think, total, that's bringing an impact to the economy of this county. And the chamber is working on getting feedback from these folks to learn, you know, how much money did they actually spend in Hart County? Because that's been a big question for the taxpayers. You know, we support these ideas, we support these chamber events and all, but how, what kind of effect, what do we gain from these events coming? And I believe it really benefits our county, but just like anyone else, we like to see the numbers, we like to see the facts and the evidence of having these events. And one other thing, I think we've all got our calendar marked for June the eighth and the tenth to start working on our budget. Just, just a reminder that that will be going on.
July.
Huh?
You said, you said June, didn't you?
Yeah.
It's July.
July?
Yes.
Okay. We'll do it in July then. Well, let's get ready for it. I mean, but I don't want to fall behind on getting our tax notices out, and we want to be on time, so, all right. Well, I have that scheduled in July the thirteenth and fifteenth and twenty-seventh and twenty-ninth. All right. That's all I have. We'll go to District One.
All the calls I'm getting is bush hogging, and what I found out is our bush hogs have been in Reed Creek tied up, and they're headed back out into the county this week or next week to get a lot of our county roads. I know they're tall, and everybody says, but anyway, the bush hogs are back on the move towards the county. All right, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, District One. Commissioner Bennett, all right, Commissioner Teasley?
I appreciate our law enforcement, the fire department, our first responders, our EMS and our county employees. I'm like, Mr. Bennett, been getting some calls about the bush hogging, which I know they're going around and probably as quick as they can. I don't know how many details we got going, doing it, but appreciate what they do in making their rounds. And also, Ms. Sandra Brown, the Gold Star Ceremony is this Friday, this Saturday at ten o'clock at the courthouse grounds. They take it right there.
Yeah, the sand is up there.
Anyway, that's all I got.
Okay. District Four, Commissioner Corrigan?
Yeah, I got several things. The one in the last plot, though, there was some tentage court work need to be, to be done. And I believe one of them rebuilt and paved and settled. Do we have a plan on when that's gonna start, or what's going on there?
Uh, I haven't received anything from the Rec Advisory Board on what they're, what's planned and what they want to put in to do it, which, which way they want to spend their money first. I haven't got that from the Rec Advisory Board.
I was told the other day it was turned in to somebody, so I don't know. Not you. But I think I had the talking station.
Recommendations from the Rec Advisory Committee.
Well, I just want to make sure that it was in the works, because I've had some people ask me. Several years, we talked about the handicap access ramp at the library, if we're gonna ever do anything with that, or what are we waiting on there?
Yeah, we need to. You're right. I'll see if I can get somebody down there within the next week to get that done. If it's decided for sure exactly what they want, I hadn't talked to Richard.
I hadn't, I hadn't either, but I know that we...
At one place, and then we decided we're gonna move it somewhere else. I can't remember, it's been so, been so long, I actually don't remember exactly the conversation.
But I know we've talked about it.
Right.
All right, and the next thing on my, on my list is, since we've been talking about camping, if you, I've got this magazine right here, it's called Georgia County Governor from ACCG. It's got a bunch of information in there about outdoor recreation and the possibility of grants for outdoor recreation. So I thought, since we've been looking at campgrounds, taking over campgrounds, that we might could go through these people to see what kind we could get. It's called the, let's see if I can find it. Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Program expands outdoor recreation. It's wrote, this article wrote Outdoor Stewardship Grant Coordinator. Now, I don't know whether we'll be available to get a grant, but it's something we need to look at, if they grant out there, then we ought to shoot for them. It says, "GOSA dedicates forty percent of existing state sales and use tax received from outdoor sporting goods to fund these projects without raising or enacting any new taxes. GOSP is reimbursement-based program, having five hundred thousand minimum award and a maximum free maintenance for local municipal county projects, requiring a minimum of twenty-five percent applicant match." And it tells a lot of stories about how bicycle trails is a big deal now, which we have ten miles, I believe it is, up there at Paines Creek. And it says there's a lot of youth that's getting into it, they have bicycle camps and all this kind of stuff. If you look through that, I think you can find it very interesting to see what's available to. There's an article in there about, tells you what, where to go to, what to do, they're gonna have some kind of big deal about in the vest to hold on, so I don't know, but it's worth looking into.
Okay. Want to take the lead on that?
I'll see for the information I can find out with it. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. District Five, Commissioner Dorsey?
I just want to reiterate what Chair was saying, Shannon and the road department guys are doing a good job down at Milltown. I went down there and went through the park one day last week, I don't remember which day it was. Health insurance, getting close, we need to start looking at, I'm not aware of any major...
I got, no, there's no, we got some information, Matthew? Uh, three percent.
Three?
Three percent.
Just want to stay on top of it, and don't have one of these, we don't want to end up like...
No, no, it's, it came in at three percent increase.
Okay. And then, I just want to commend Stratton and Sons for the paving work they've done. They've done a really good job, and they've really got after it, these last few miles. They've done a really good job, so that's all I've got, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to old business, twelve A, Amendment to Chapter Forty-Six Land Development Standards, Article Five requirements for streets and rightways.
Let me tackle that one. Mr. Chairman, I've got an amendment suggested for that. Let me pass that out, but as I'm passing it, I'll read it. It's quite simple. Just pass that on down. Now, therefore, the Board of Commissioners hereby amends said ordinance, which is Section sixty-two, I'm sorry, Section Forty-Six, the Hart County Code of Ordinance, specifically Section Forty-Six dash one ninety-one D by adding a second sentence as follows. Now, where that goes, item D, where that goes, is what affixes the setback lines and particularly the forty-foot front setback lines. And this is what you would add. In subdivision lots where circumstances preclude the use of a forty-foot front setback from an existing road, and the existing road has a minimum right-of-way of sixty feet with pavement occupying no more than twenty feet in the middle of the road, the, that should be right-of-way, I'll correct that. The board may consider granting a variance to reduce the front setback to twenty feet. And that would be effective on its adoption. I believe that you have already taken steps to consider that as a first reading at your last meeting. No...
The distances are not right.
All right. Help me with it.
What we said was that we would exchange the fifteen feet. So in a subdivision lots where circumstances preclude the use of a forty-foot front, we're looking at the right-of-way first, then the setback. So a minimum right-of-way, if it doesn't have at least forty foot, a minimum right-of-way, we're gonna swap, for example, on one that was thirty foot, we've swapped fifteen foot of right-of-way for a fifteen-foot variance on the setback, so that it was a wash.
Okay, so that if there were, if there were a minimum thirty-foot right-of-way?
That was, that was the one that we talked about and the one we granted the variance on, because the exist, what we said, if the right-of-way was less than forty feet, forty feet we can kind of work with, but less than forty, we have problems. We would grant a variance on the front setback in exchange for the right-of-way. So whatever the variance requested and the right-of-way given, they have to wash, have to be the same.
But we have to have at least thirty foot from the center of the road.
Right, that's the target, is to get to sixty.
That's what we're after. Well, that would be the minimum right-of-way of sixty, as it shows. And then the pavement would occupy no more than twenty feet in the middle of the road.
But the existing road doesn't have sixty foot of right-of-way. The existing road doesn't have sixty foot of right-of-way. If it's got sixty foot, it's a mute point. This, this is to tackle those existing county roads that have forty foot or less right-of-way.
All right, so forty feet or less. I got you. It was, the new one, we'll basically read that the existing road has a minimum right-of-way of forty feet or less, the board may consider granting a variance to reduce the front setback...
In exchange for incremental right-of-way. The exchange should be a wash.
All right, so let me ask this, that would not then include application on an existing county road? That would only be if there's a new road?
No, this would be on existing county road.
All right, how could, I don't understand how the developer can give you a part of the road right-of-way. I mean, you can dedicate it.
You don't have it, that's it. Like, so, so let's say Early Drive, for example, we got a thirty-foot right-of-way. We didn't do this on Early Drive, we should have, but we didn't know what we were getting ourselves into. And I can't remember the road we did this on, but we took, we had thirty-foot right-of-way. So we asked the developer to give us fifteen-foot right-of-way. And in exchange for that, we give him a variance from a forty-foot setback to a twenty-foot...
He gave the county fifteen?
Yes.
And then you let him cut, cut back fifteen?
On the setback distance.
All right. I understand that then.
So the wash didn't be... Didn't be, that was it, yeah.
All right, let me bring that back to you next meeting.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I'll get with you if you need to.
Thank you. And then on the next one, I'll, I'll take it too.
Yes, sir.
That one, I have had the opportunity to review the suggested changes in the amendment, and I don't, I think they are as they are. I mean, they're pretty clear and straightforward, and they don't really make any huge changes to the existing animal control ordinance. It just basically adds the specific language of the state requirements. And just a note about that, this, this animal ordinance was first proposed in nineteen ninety-four, and it was finally adopted, I believe, in two thousand and three or two thousand and four. Pardon me?
The one listed in here is twenty thirteen.
Well, that was just the latest amendment, right. It was, I've got a list, if you might be interested in, that shows you the number of times it's been considered and brought to the board and either not acted on, or after it was acted on in oh-three, later amended. But that's all I really have to say about that one.
There, there is a topic that we need to discuss, and this is how many dogs are required for kennel license? Or do we even want to put that in there? I think we need to put something in there. This is under Section fourteen forty-two. Yeah, the Department of Agriculture controls. Well, may have, but I mean, as far as putting that in here, I did not put anything in here, because I felt like we needed to discuss that, because we may have differences of opinion.
I think we could say that kennels must be appropriately licensed by the Department of Agriculture.
But how many, so how many dogs do you have to have before you're required to have a kennel license? I don't think it defines that.
Do you know that number at all? I heard it, though.
I'd read that one would be added in there.
Yeah, that needs to be. So I mean...
You have to state law make that a term.
No, it does not. It does not.
Are we gonna limit how many dogs can be in a boarding kennel or just a kennel period?
Say what then?
I said, are we looking to eliminate, not eliminate, are we looking to tell people how many dogs they can have in their kennel? Is that for boarding kennel or...
No, you're looking to tell how many dogs they can have before they have to have a kennel license. Is it five, is it six, is it seven? You know, there's some people who got fifteen or twenty dogs, there's some that are licensed breeders that are already licensed to the Department of Agriculture.
Who would you find that out from, Terrell?
That's something I think we, we can do, we can get with the Department of Ag, or...
I can call them.
We can define that ourselves.
I can call the Department of Ag agent I deal with all the time and find that.
So we, we looking at telling people you can only have this many dogs?
No, that's not what I said. No, we're saying if you got X number of dogs, you got to have a kennel license. You have a hundred, I mean, if the ordinance lets you have them, but if you got more than six, if that's the threshold, you got to have a kennel license.
And what would the purpose of that be?
Well, if you got a kennel license, I mean, the Department of Ag inspects you regularly. I can't remember if it's quarterly or whatever. And you got to pass their inspection when they come. I'd be happy to put something together and bring it back if you want, I don't have a problem with that at all, but I want to make sure we all had the opportunity to discuss it.
But, Terrell, you think there are some state guidelines on that?
Well, I know there are state guidelines.
I might not know what they are before.
Well, we know that.
How does that work with these people who've got two or three yard dogs, and all of a sudden they got two litters of puppies, now they got two dogs, and they either...
You'd make exception for that. Now, they kept all the litters of puppies, and if you set the number at six, then it's gonna trigger a kennel license for farm though.
I expect well, that's actually how that worked with them, because most of them get rid of the dogs, find them homes or whatever. Or drop them by my house or whatever.
And then you'll bring them to my house.
Yeah, Terrell, Terrell.
All right, so we'll not take any action on this, we'll do a little bit more research.
Let's take the first reading.
You'll go ahead and take the first reading, and then we'll add that on to the next, in our next meeting. All right, do we have a motion to take as a first reading?
Some of it.
Do I have a second? Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey and a second by... Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey and a second by Commissioner Bennett. Any discussion?
So, I'm just reading over this draft and the information, I still don't see anything about feral cats. And I'm so confused, because I went back and forth and listening, we did cats, but we still cast this animal ordinance, it's not cat or dog ordinance. I talked to Sheriff Cleveland, and he told me that when you gentlemen tell him that they'll trap feral cats, he'll trap feral cats. And I'm not understanding with animal control officer being full-time now, he's got more hours, and in this draft, it says dog officer, not animal control officer.
Let me ask you a question. Let me ask you a question. Do you realize the sheriff is already picking up cats?
No, he's not.
Yes, he is.
Yes, he is. He told you that.
I just talked to him Friday, and he told me no.
I just, I just talked to him. Yes, he's.
What do you have to do? I talked to him Friday, and he told me no.
Well, I, when a parent called him, if the child endangered, there was a feral cat, he advised his animal control officer to go set a trap and pick that cat up.
Because the child was endangered, not because there's.
It's public safety. This is all about public safety.
There's nothing in here about feral cats.
Well, the sheriff is actively picking up cats, that's my point, that's what I wanted to.
And he just told me Friday he's not. When you tell him he has to do it, he'll do it.
We don't, we don't have to tell. We don't tell the sheriff what to do. He is a constitutional officer, independently elected by this board.
If he sees a public safety issue, he will take care of it.
So, when somebody calls about they have a colony of feral cats, and it just happened Friday, just happened Friday, I mean, you told me to talk to him, and I did it.
No, I didn't, I didn't tell you to talk to him.
Who told me here to talk, talk to the sheriff? He's willing to sit down and talk to somebody.
I told you to call the sheriff.
And I did call.
That they got an animal control officer.
And just said, dog control officer, dog officer, dog officer, and he told me they are not. If it's an, there's a big difference between, I'm, I'm just telling you.
I think we're making more out of this than what needs to be. I think the sheriff is willing and is already providing that service of picking up those cats. I just talked to him yesterday.
I will call him tomorrow, because he told me Friday he is not. And why does it say dog officer, not animal?
Donna, you can nitpick this thing, you're not gonna be happy.
And you went backwards on this.
No, we did not.
And now it's all.
No, 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 we did not, and I take offense to that. But we said, and we said, that we were gonna incorporate state law about dogs into this, because we've got vicious dogs and we've got dangerous dogs. We just had a child that was mauled by a dog not long ago, okay? And we had already started working on this ordinance. So, we put these ordinances out a couple of years ago, for over a year, for people to give us recommendations. And I spent a lot of time pulling this together. If you've got something you want in here, you should have given it to us when we put them out there for people to give them. We talked about this multiple times, we put every ordinance in the, in the whole book, this whole book, right here, put it out there.
This is the fourth meeting, and you told me we're not doing cats, you told me we're not doing cats.
We're not doing cats. We, we put in here what was in state law, and there's already things in here about cats, it's not up to us what's enforced and what's not. We set the ordinance, and then all that's in here, and what was added to this was state law.
I'm sorry, can we back this up? Did you just say we're not doing cats?
I said, we didn't add anything in here about cats other than cattery, which I told you last time is in here. The stuff that's highlighted in bold print is what was added. And it does mention cats in here, but it doesn't mention, huh?
Where? Cattery? A cattery is somebody who breeds cats.
Yeah, that's right, it's on page two.
But I'm not worried about a cattery.
So, you said there's nothing that was put in here, but it was put in here in the definition. So, yes, there is something in here about cats.
It's all about dogs and one cattery that sells kittens.
It's cats.
So, you.
It's cats, too.
Commissioner, Sheriff, Sheriff Cleveland told you that he will pick up cats?
Yes, ma'am. He told me that when it, when, when there is public safety involved, it don't matter if it's a cat, dog, whatever, if someone is endangered, that's our sheriff, he's gonna take care of it.
So, they'll pick up dogs roaming at large, but not cats, feral cat colonies? They have to bite somebody first?
Listen, I'm not the sheriff.
Covered in section 1440 of the proposed ordinance provision on feeding stray and feral animals.
Stray and stray animals.
Against the person that feeds them.
But, let me read the first sentence. Feral and stray animals constitute public safety, health, and environmental hazards to domesticated animals' wildlife. First, then it goes on to establish a violation for a person to harbor such animals, but that is not itself establishes a basis for cats to be picked up.
When somebody calls, what do they do with cats?
Let me just say, I haven't talked to the sheriff about it, and I'm not engaging in the argument, because I've not talked to him. But it would strike me as odd that he'd plan to, to pick up cats and set them up in the public.
I'm not understanding the endangering to the public. Like, today I got two calls about cats. So, they have to endanger somebody before they're a nuisance. The last ordinance said nuisance animals. Now, this one is saying endangering the public. So, to me, that seems like it's going backwards. It's not a nuisance, nuisance anymore, it has to be an endangerment for somebody to have feral cats that carry rabies and aren't vaccinated. And there's another one in here that says about dogs having rabies attacks. I don't see anything about cats having rabies vaccines.
That's state law, so.
So, it's second to none.
Cats should have, have felines, there's canine and feline.
I just want, when the call comes to me, for me to say, call the sheriff's department, and them to be picked up. And Thursday, Friday, it did not happen. And I talked to Sheriff Cleveland myself. And I'll talk.
Well, I'll, I'll clear one other thing, too. Now, if, if the sheriff is, has got some issues going on, and we've got a standoff somewhere, and there's possibly more accidents all over the place, then those things take precedence, and he may not be able to get to them at that time.
I understand that.
So, we'll talk about that the next day, you know, so.
What did you say, Joey? I'm sorry, I missed.
I said, a situation where we got a standoff or a fatality somewhere, we're not gonna go catch a cat, he's got other priorities.
Well, the only way you're gonna catch a cat, trap them in there. You ain't gonna run down there and scoop them up, feral cats in there. So, you gotta go down there and trap, set a trap, put food in, catch them, and then do what you gotta do with them.
None of the other rescue groups have said anything about cats.
Because we're the only one that gets the calls about the cats. We're the only ones that rescue cats, sir.
I, I know of others that do.
In Hart County?
Yeah.
Cores rescuing cats.
I, I know of others that do.
I'm gonna make a statement, and then I'm gonna read some of the, if we are concerned about cats, we don't know what the sheriff is saying, you saying one thing, and they saying something else. I hadn't talked to him.
You calling us lies? We talked to him.
You don't lie. I said, she's saying one thing, and you saying one thing.
Well, I talked to him today before the meeting.
And, and if we got that problem, then maybe we need the sheriff to come in and talk to us.
The whole, the whole intention, Commissioner Carter, is to meet with the sheriff and the magistrate judge next week, and I've talked to both of them. You sit up here, always harping, we need to revise the ordinance, we need to revise an ordinance, but you never put forth one ounce of effort to do it. At least I took the time to put together a document so you could sit here and nitpick it, and then we'll get it. This is how you do it. That's what's here for.
So, I, I do wanna say, I feel like it's, it's me up here all the time, and somebody actually said, is it a personal issue against me? That, but we do have 1,200 members of the Hart County Humane Society, we have 6,500 followers on Facebook. We do our adoptions kinda locally here, so all those people are our family. They're on our Instagram, our Google match, match search is 27,698. Our Facebook page reaches 2,016,795. You know, we have, I'm just here to represent all these. Our, our email is 3,621, reaches, our email reaches out to. So, if somebody else can rescue cats, that would be amazing. But what I'm saying, the old ordinance was saying nuisance animals. Now, this is saying that I'd be happy to talk to Sheriff Cleveland and you gentlemen, and Mr. Gordon, and you as well, and have some clarification with this.
You can do that after we get the ordinance adopted.
Why would I do that after it's adopted? I've been through this for 15 years now, trying to get feral cats trapped. I'm trying to do it before.
How big a problem is a feral cat, Donna?
A lot. They're nasty, they bite, they carry rabies.
Tell me, tell me how big a problem it is.
It's a lot.
Quantify a lot.
It's a whole lot. Two calls today.
Okay.
One lady of, in your district, has 30-some cats. They don't know what to, they can't catch them. It's a big problem. It's a, maybe if somebody else got the calls, then maybe you realize that it's a big problem. And I'm not gonna wait until after.
And it's on private property, too.
Cat, you don't have to feed a cat. Cats eat squirrels and birds.
I know, and rats, and rodents.
And carry disease.
Are we saying that we're gonna pick up a dog on private property?
I'm just saying that you, before you can go out on private property and start setting traps, you gotta have permission.
If somebody calls and says, I have a problem with these cats, people are buying houses, and the people that left, the cats are left there. So, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't feel like I could wait until it's, it's adopted. I'm here, fourth week now, to have feral cats, and that understanding that the animal control officer, not the dog officer, will trap feral cats, that are a large problem.
You know, the sheriff's, the sheriff's duty is supposed to request the animal control person to even come out. That's the way this was originally set up.
But you don't call the, the animal control officer, you call the sheriff's department and the county, and the, and the city police in the city, that's who you call. Yeah, so, I'm, I'm sorry, Joe, you don't think there's a problem. I'm sorry, because you're asking me how big a problem the cat, feral cat is.
Because somebody else told me how big the prob, you said the problem was, I just wanted you to be on tape, that it was a really big problem.
It is a big problem.
You said a lot, you said a lot.
You said too much.
I said what?
A lot.
A lot what?
It's a big problem.
It is a big problem. Two calls today, from two old people.
So, what'd you do?
I said, call the sheriff's department, let me know. And that's what happened Friday, and they, I was told no. So, please, somebody calls, get back to me, tell me what Sheriff Cleveland says, but feral cats are a problem in this county, and dog officer, that's not close.
Miss Lighted, it'll be, put in there as animal officer, or whatever, like the rest of the language.
Do I have that?
She didn't, I missed, you got him down as the dog officer.
Well, it's talking about a dog officer, it's talking about a dog in the, the.
13 times, 13 times it says dog.
Well, you know what, we could do away with the whole ordinance.
And it also says, animal control officer.
We just do away with the update.
You think it's me?
No, I mean, you're not happy with what we did, we just, we don't even have to go through the readings to update it. I did this to try to make things better, but you're complaining about what we did.
You're not complaining, she just talked about cats. That's not a complaint, that's a genuine concern.
Okay.
Ain't nothing.
And, and I'll be back in two, so I'll sign off here, please.
Alright, we got a motion to take this as the first reading by Commissioner Dorsey, and a second, and a second by Commissioner Bennett. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I got a few things I'd like to say. Number one, we're sitting here talking about this, if we already picking up cats, and then put feral cats in the ordinance, it'd be done with it, that'd take the whole, that'd solve the whole problem.
Well, it says feral animals.
I know, but.
Well, I mean, mind you, then you're gonna limit it to dogs and cats.
You got, you got animal control officer, we're gonna have two officers, we're gonna have one. Why don't we just call it what it is, it's animal control officer. It sound like to me, we're trying to do away with the animal control officer, make it dog control officer, oh, we can't pick up a cat, because we got only a dog.
It references animal control officers.
I know, some of them.
Well, I may.
Right. Now, this ordinance, then the old one, has no purpose, old and new one, none of them has a, let me start all over again. The old one, all the new have proposed, has no listed purpose, nor does it have an intent. I don't understand how you create something if you don't have a purpose and an intent to create it. I've seen this as a much larger issue, because I've been doing a lot of reading on feral cats, and I'm, I'm gonna answer some of your questions on some of them. And I do agree that we ought to get stakeholders together, where everybody get on the same page, get the sheriff in here, the animal control officer in here, all of them, and these ladies out here that does the, does the cats on the Humane Society, get them all in here, and let them tell, tell us what the problem is going on now. Ain't nothing wrong with doing that. We need to actively seek public input when we creating the ordinance and redoing it. I say nothing wrong with it.
Put it in writing, put it in writing, that's all we've asked.
That's good, come up here, put it in writing, that's fine, come up here.
But I'm still, I said we're gonna adopt it, but you gotta give somebody a hard copy of something to work with.
That's good, then just get together and tell everybody, give us a hard copy.
We said we were updating this ordinance to incorporate state law, so that the officers, when they go out in the field, they have the state law that's readily available to them. Right now, they don't have that.
I have no problem with it, I have no problem with it, but we're sitting here arguing about putting cats on animal control.
Well, we said, did we not say we were gonna do this update to the, the animal control ordinance and put the state law for dogs in it? Is that not what we said we was gonna do?
I don't care what was said, I'm telling you.
That's what we doing.
We have a discussion on feral.
You better care what was said.
Our problem with capturing these cats is private property, biggest problem we got with, I mean, we can't go private property and set traps.
You can, if people call you out there and set traps. I mean, I'm not saying nobody gonna run out there and set a trap, but if somebody calls you, I got a bunch of cats calling on my property, when you come get them.
Oh, I agree.
They giving you permission to do that.
Something needs to be done about the cats.
I'm gonna answer one of the questions about, to me, feral cats is a public safety issue regardless of who it endangers, it endangers each and every one of us. If you look at it and do the research I've done, it's kinda scary if you really pay attention to it. And I wanna answer your question about what the problem is. Last meeting, they said they had 288 cats brought in last year, alright? So, if you take half of those cats are female, and I can't promise you every one of them's gonna be male or female, but half of them, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use that for a number. You got 144 cats that's able to breed in five to 10 months after they're born. Their average is one to eight kittens per litter. They can do that three times per year. So, if you take 144 cats, and each one of them has four kittens, I'm going on the mid, mid-range from eight to one, that's gonna give you 576 cats, start with. Now, if they do that three times, that's gonna give you 1,728 cats. So, if you don't, take it in half, and leave 864 able to breed, that's four per litter, that's 3,456 kittens. If you do that 10 times, then in about two years, you got 10,000 some cats up there. So, tell me it ain't a problem. We got a problem, I talked to DNR, they all said they had a problem. I've done the research, I've got all kind of papers here on the research, and the zoonotic diseases. Do you know one of the diseases that cats carry is avian flu? Do you know what avian flu is? Bird flu. If we had a rash of avian flu strike in Hart County, what do you think would happen to the chicken broiler in this county? They transmit that disease. They transmit a lot of diseases to human beings, lots of them. And I'd be glad to sit here and spell out each and every one of them, that do, and it's scary if you really look at this thing. I've been around animals all my life, I've had cats, I know, and if you don't think they vicious, you just snatch up one of them feral cats, see what happens to you. Terrell, you limb for limb, but I don't wanna bore everybody with reading all this information, but I got a lot of information in there.
Well, really, I think this ordinance covers it when it says feral animals, I mean, that would, wouldn't a cat fall under that definition? But we got a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor to take this as first reading? All opposed? It's a four to one vote.
It don't have no purpose and intent, I can't vote for nothing that don't have a purpose.
Alright. Next on the agenda is the building permit enforcement discussion.
Well, we heard, what we heard a while ago with the property appraisal report. And I say that this board needs to be behind our code enforcement officer, and let's get aggressive with this code enforcement. People who aren't getting building permits are gonna cost us money, possibly, with this, uh, real estate sales ratio getting less than thirty-eight percent. What that means is that your public utilities, which are your larger taxpayers, if they, if the real estate sales ratio is less than thirty-eight percent, that means they're not taxing a hundred percent like everybody else. So they getting a break, that's just money and revenue lost by the county for both the board commissioners and the school boards. Um, I think we need to get behind it. I feel sure the newspaper's probably gonna cover some of this. Uh, but I'm gonna make a motion that we enact a zero tolerance policy on building permit, and we start issuing citations on these things.
I'll second it.
How we gonna find them?
This is out and about. It's not posted at the road, it's a citation.
But there again, how we gonna find them? Who's gonna...
I guess you gotta look for them, Ricky.
If we do, if we do the zero toler, if we do the zero tolerance and a few of these people are reprimanded and pay these hefty fines, it'll be noticed, and people will take notes and get in their purse. We're not even forced to, nobody's gonna take a note. But if you do the zero tolerance, it possibly helps.
Yeah, I'm not against doing it. Don't take it wrong, I'm just asking.
But you know, if you do all these people read them all in the time, it'd be something spoiled with the grass.
Yeah, obviously, if you knew the ordinance, it says it's gotta be visible from the road. So if you ride by, and you see a house being framed up, or you see a roof being put on that's not like and similar, that should be an automatic citation.
They can be fined whether they got a permit or not. If the permit's not displayed visible from the road, they can be fined the same fine for not getting a permit.
Yeah, I'll amend my motion and give a grace period to the end of this month, and after that, we're gonna get aggressive with it. Zero tolerance.
I'll amend my second. Okay, so we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Sager. And, uh, any other discussion?
Is Reynolds gonna do this? Is that what I'm talking about? He gonna be out riding roads?
Yeah, Reynolds out riding roads every day.
All right, all in favor? It's five-o vote. All right, uh, next on the agenda is the tenant subdivision, uh, that we tabled last meeting.
Make a motion, we take it off the table.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to take it off the table. All in favor? All opposed?
I'm in favor.
It's five-o vote in favor. All right, um, the discussion was about the driveway, sharing a driveway through, uh, the middle of the subdivision. So, and I think there's been some other subdivisions that have been, um, approved with sharing of driveways to two parcels, so I'll open it up for discussion.
Well, the, uh, my issue here is there's a ravine, and the subdivision ordinance requires a topo, and I know that this is, you can argue either way. But emergency services being able to get back down in here if homes are located up at the top where those two lots are. Um, I just don't know that you're gonna be able to get back in there. And it is served by a utility and a utility easement that goes down through the center. And Mr. Blomberg's here, he and I talked about this earlier today. Uh, how deep is that ravine?
Where the driveway crosses is not that bad, but when you get towards the lake, it turns into a range, and it's, it's a deep...
So what happens when this thing gets washed out, if we have a really, really, really heavy rain, what happens?
Where is the ravine at?
It's at the top.
I mean, it's like any driveway, it has to be built first. I mean, there's no codes for building driveway, it just gotta be built by. And that's a private property. That's up to them. I mean, I'm just merely getting this property what they require now on the road, and instead of making a straight line for a boundary line, I'm using a driveway for boundary line, which we use driveways for boundary lines all the time. It's just a proposed doing it from the beginning, as opposed to...
And you know, the subdivisions that were emailed to us, a lot of those were approved by the county administrator. In the current situation now, the board actually approves them. And if you look at those, there are some that were exempt from the subdivision ordinance, and there were some that John Kami approved, that after I saw my really question why they were approved. But we can't go back and change it. Some were, I think there was one that was actually recorded that the board commissioners, nobody in the board office ever approved. So, that's my concern.
Scroll back down and show me where the ravine is, if you can.
Yeah, it's where the branch.
It's branch.
Really in the branch area, where the driveway crosses over toward the east side. It's more of a swale, and that's why we wanna cross it there. It's better for the environment, it's better for both parties to be able, instead of putting two driveways, put a property. Because obviously, if I put a straight line, there wouldn't even be this conversation. They can put two driveways inside those sixty-foot strips, which is what you require in the code of ordinance. And so instead, we're wanting to make a driveway, the property line, let both of them share the driveway, share the responsibility of it, and be able to cross at one time, and it'll be just environmentally responsible with the amount of anybody, as opposed to put the two driveways side by side.
But realistically, whoever buys lots can put their driveway where they want to.
And they can, honestly, they don't. If Mr. Tann builds that driveway like we're proposing, and the people don't want it, they could put it up on the right side of it, and nothing keeping them from doing that. They could put three, there'd be three driveways put there. I mean, they can abandon the middle one.
I think you need to take the driveways off. I don't have a problem with you taking driveways off of it. But I'm just concerned there's gonna be a problem there with that ravine. We get a lot of rain, we've had other roads that's been washed out just in the last couple of years. But I just don't think that the driveway needs to be there. If they wanna put it there after we approve it, that's their business.
I make a motion, we go ahead and approve it, and then they can do what they want to with the driveways.
And also, I mean, discussed about driveway maintenance agreements. I mean, I talked with the developer, that is, something we proposed to him is to set that up for both the party to have a maintenance agreement. That's something that is...
You have a second?
Yeah, I'll give you a second.
All right, you got a motion and second. Any other discussion?
You wanna amend the motion and put the driveway agreement on there?
Put the what?
He said he was willing to put a driveway maintenance agreement on there.
Um, that's my suggestion to the plan, is to do one. I always suggest that for any kind of property, easements, to do a maintenance agreement. That's always my suggestion.
Y'all remember the problem, Nick, Nick, uh, works for the city, Nick, Nick, uh, what's his...
I'm Nick Sanders.
Nick Sanders had the same problem with the easement. Y'all remember that?
No, really.
This board had to deal with, up off of Yacht Club Road.
That's right. The biggest problem here is we're getting name rushed.
Well, that had other lots, that had other properties coming off of that easement. That had other, there was other properties down there that was using that easement to come out. This is what you got here.
What part is the easement? Is there enough room to have a driveway without getting on the easement?
The easement's right here.
Yeah, outstanding.
Yeah, the purpose is to just make the boundary line. I mean, there's other purpose of driveway, boundary line. We're just deciding, instead of making a straight line and building the driveway later, that meanders along it, and then adding the driveway to the easement later. We're just gonna go ahead and make the driveway the boundary line.
I mean, I'm okay with you put a driveway agreement thing on there.
What's the width of the driveway?
We flagged it with Mr. Tucker, we flagged it, and the driveway's not built yet. We will have to revise it, but we've already got a flag. It's ready to be built, we can put flags about every fifty-hundred feet all the way down through there. We can build located by this, and so once it's built, we will go back and mend it, you know, a couple feet here or there to make it simple, to make the property...
They showing thirty-foot wide ingress secret.
That gives you enough for ingress secrets, and also, and when hopefully county water get over one day, and they can run, they don't have to go, they can run the easement, you know. They can run their, uh, down the graded areas, and they can go ahead and run water lines, they can run utility lines down there. I always go ahead and add easement, the utility easement's in there, it just saves a lot of headache in the future. I know y'all have headaches with that, with people having ingress secrets and not having utility easements in the past. I'm just trying to go ahead and make those headaches, I'm gonna have to add the language for utility easement.
So you got plenty of room in there to have thirty-foot wide driveway on each side of that?
Fifteen foot wide, fifteen foot.
A hundred-and-twenty foot wide all the way through there.
The driveway would be fifteen foot wide, this is property line divides the driveway. And you put in twenty-four-foot driveway pipes.
I'm talking about the boundary line to the pole, that way.
The boundary line to the...
The power pole, that's power easement, right?
No, it's, uh, it's just a utility easement, the power man.
Okay, y'all putting that in our future?
For the future.
Okay, so there's nothing there?
Nothing there now, no.
All right, we got a motion and second.
You gonna add, you gonna put this driveway agreement thing on there?
Is that a problem?
I mean, I always suggest, I'm not sure my thought has a problem with it.
Okay. Okay, I'll amend my motion with the driveway agreement. All right, who's second? You mean...
I'll second.
Okay. All right. Um, any other discussion? All in favor? It's five-o vote. All right, new business thirteen A, tax digest, personal property, uncollectible write-offs.
You'll see a letter there from the tax commissioner and the chief of freighter outlining, and this is all boats that, see, that have been destroyed, moved out of the county, whatever. They're not, they're unfindable, they're not taxable anymore. And the total's up from twenty, oh-nine to twenty-twenty, the total's fifty-three thousand on one thirty-eight twenty-nine. And it says business inventory equipment, but Wayne told me before he left, it was all boats, so... If y'all got some questions, that's why I got him to stay here to answer the questions.
Anyone got any questions?
I'm just gonna point this out. There's still, the report has stuff that's still collectible, and that's not the whole picture. Not all of this is uncollectible, because some of it's...
Not all of it's being deleted, just what...
Right, the ones that's got the check mark are staying.
What you saying?
Actually, the one is marked to delete or being deleted.
Yeah, but I was saying, my point here is not everything is being done, because some of these are businesses are still in business today.
If you look at the totals, you'll see the difference of it.
Yeah, I did. I make a motion, we approve.
Okay, we got a motion to approve these write-offs. Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, we got a second by Commissioner Teasley. Any other discussion?
I got a question. What can be done, if anything, to prevent this from happening?
I'll let you have a look.
The problem is, is when somebody, people don't understand, a lot of people don't understand, when they buy a boat in Georgia, that on January first, that boat is taxable. And if they sell it somewhere between January the first and the end of the year, they still owe the taxes for that year. And what happens is a lot of people don't refuse, either refuse to pay the tax, and said, "I don't own that boat no more," and don't pay the tax. And, you know, Karen has the authority to issue a FIFA on that boat, or that, you know, or first of property, whatever it is, and she can do that. Uh, we have no way of collecting taxes on it, you know, we just assess it. Uh, so it's really up to the tax collector to issue a FIFA if that's where she wants to go with it. But, and boats are a big problem, you know, I mean, people buy and sell boats all the time. And so, and most people do not understand that if they owned it on January the first, they owe taxes for that year, no matter when they sell it. And that's the big problem, so that's why I say nothing.
The tax commissioner side, if the boat's gone, she has nothing to put a FIFA on.
Yeah, I mean, it's kinda hard to put a FIFA, you know, I mean, you can put, you know, most of the time you put it against the property, if it's land, you put the FIFA against the property or something like that, well, the boat's gone, or the boat's been destroyed, or whatever, you got nothing to put it against, and so it's very hard to do.
Well, let me ask you another question. When you go buy a vehicle now, you pay the sale tax, and pay all the tax right up front, right?
That's correct. Entirely different, entirely different thing, yeah.
This is the annual, this is the annual animal orient tax on boats, is what this is.
Exactly right.
Well, FIFA, though, I mean, that goes against the person and that property, the boat. It will come to life somewhere when they go to sell a piece of property, borrow money somewhere. It's gonna come to life.
It can, yeah.
Well, why don't, why don't we have our tax commissioner do this? And it'll come back, it may take five, ten years.
What happens is these boats get moved out of county, or whatever, and they get registered in another county, and that's, that's where the problem's at.
Well, how much would it cost to issue a FIFA and do all that? Some of them right here, seventy dollars.
Now, there's one in here, ten thousand.
No, but that might be worth going at.
I read them all.
See, if you look on page four, um, the third one down, boats taxed in Haversham. Then the next one down, Home Repos, in two thousand thirteen, no real property owned here, no accounting activity since two thousand and eight, and it goes all the way through two thousand and nineteen. And it was a boat.
But if they ever did come to that Hart County business, it would come to life.
I don't think he'd have a leg to stand on.
No, 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 no problem.
Yeah, and what the problem is, is you guys are looking at this as revenue. You know, you're looking at, you know, these boats, you know, right now, as part of the digest that shows up, you know, every year, you expect them to get the money, you're not gonna get it.
That's why we budget ninety-five percent, that's why we don't budget a hundred percent collection.
Yeah.
All right, we got a motion, second, to accept these write-offs. All in favor? It's five-o vote. Next on the agenda is the City of Hartlanx request, partial.
Yeah, I put the entire packet in your, in your packet. Uh, this is a parcel over on, uh, Law Drive, Law Drive. The portion of, portion of it's already in the city. This is the one they would have round circle across their property. And what they're doing is, this lady has requested to be, for all of her properties to be annexed in, instead of just portion of it, uh, and it meets all, all the laws and requirements of the state.
I make a motion, we approve her to be annexed.
That's second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Sager, second by Commissioner Bennett. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five-o vote. All right, next on the agenda is the, uh, Alawita Incorporated Platte Approval C-70D dash zero-zero-three dash zero-zero-two. And that's down on Old Twenty-Nine.
Liberty Hill Road.
Going toward Rolston.
That's Liberty Hill Road.
Liberty Hill Road, I'm sorry.
They said, uh, you know, they've got to put right away, that's my notion. It was, it needs all the other property.
What's the width of that flag line on the side?
Uh, sixty foot.
Three acres. Sixty foot right away?
Yeah, sixty foot, we're gonna...
Why are setbacks not shown on this road?
They're stated in the, they're stated in the road down below.
How much commission we approve?
Second.
We got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, and second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five-o vote. Next is the National Safe Boating Week proclamation. For nearly a hundred million Americans, boating continues to be a popular recreational activity from coast to coast and everywhere in between. People are taken to the water and enjoying time together boating, sailing, paddling, and fishing. During National Safe Boating Week, the U.S. Coast Guard and its federal, state, and local safe boating partners encourage all boaters to explore and enjoy America's beautiful waters responsibly. Safe boating began... Safe boating begins most boating accidents and that life jackets could prevent nearly 86% of boating fatalities. Through basic boating safety procedures, carrying lifesaving emergency distress and communications equipment, wearing life jackets, attending safe boating courses, participating in free boat safety checks, and staying sober while, when navigating. We can help ensure boaters on America's coastal, inland, and offshore waters stay safe throughout the season. National Safe Boating Week is observed to bring attention to important lifesaving tips for recreational boaters so they can have a safer, more fun experience out on the water throughout the year. Whereas, on average, 600 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the U.S. 79% of these fatalities are caused by drowning. And whereas, the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment, not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors. And whereas, a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would have been alive today had they worn their life jackets. Therefore, the Hart County Board of Commissioners does hereby support the goals of the Safe Boating Campaign and proclaim May 20th, 2nd through the 28th, 2021 as National Safe Boating Week and start the year-round effort to promote safe boating. And witness thereof, urge all those who, who vote to this 11th day of May 2021. Do we have a motion to accept this proclamation?
Second.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Carter, second by Commissioner Teasley. All in favor? It's five oh vote. Legacy Headlink Nutrition Program Services contract for fiscal year 20...
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey to approve, and a second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion?
Just like to let the people know that we serve through the senior center, meals on wheels at home, serve 30,000 meals a year.
30,000?
30,000 a year. It's hard to believe for this size county, but, but they feed a lot of meals.
Okay, thank you. We got a motion and second. All in favor? It's five oh vote. Courthouse grounds use Hart Service League 34th.
I make a motion to let them use it.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Teasley, got a second.
Second.
We got a second by Commissioner Dorsey. Any discussion?
The ground's looking good up there, I ain't paid no things.
Yeah, it look good up there. Yeah, it do. We just spent a bunch of money on black mulch, I hope it does.
It does, it does. I think I seen a truck go down the road.
800 bags.
All right, all in favor? It's five oh vote. Surplus equipment, road department, I think...
Make a motion, we declare the surplus and put it out for, on gov deals and authorize the county administrator with the maintenance supervisor and road department supervisor to set a minimum bid on reserve on all items.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Carter. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five oh vote. Replacement 6-foot Bushog, road department.
Make a motion that we approve the request by the road department supervisor for Bushog brand for 6475 out of Sploes, road department Sploes.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five oh vote.
I got, I got a question, second, talking about Bushog, I don't mind. Have we ever looked into the fact that, you know, you get side on land, you get the mound on the front of your tractor, which would be a whole lot easier instead of going down the road looking back like you. If we got one coming up, we need to check into that.
Yeah, when the one we got, we're out, we'll look at that.
All right. Next on the agenda is the credit for experience, road department.
Make a motion that we give credit for eight years' experience as in accordance with our policy and as recommended by the road department supervisor Shannon Teasley.
Second.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. And this is something we do for, when people qualify for these credits, so... Any other discussion? All in favor? It's five oh vote. All right, Wallace Property Subdivision. Now we're down on Old 29.
Off of the highway.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we approve. Everything's in order with the stipulation that all driveways be coming off of Old Highway 29, County Road 87, and not off of Highway 29.
I talked to the health department this afternoon, that's part of their notes on it too.
I second that motion. Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey.
It'd be dangerous coming off of 29, that passing lane right there.
Yeah. All right. Commissioner Dorsey made a motion with the stipulation of the driveways coming off of County Road 87. And you second it, Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Okay, we got a second by Commissioner Bennett. Any other discussion? Public comment? We'll call for a vote. All in favor? It's five oh vote. All right, credit for experience, shared departments.
I make a motion, we approve this request by the sure.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Dorsey. Any discussion? We'll call for a vote. All in favor? Five oh vote. Okay, now we have time for public comment. Anybody? Okay.
I have to take a moment, too much time.
Now, I would just like to point out that we have a opening on the Board of Assessors and anybody out there that's interested in being part of the Board of Assessors, we certainly need to help. And just basically turn your application into the county and let these guys consider it, but we need to help.
Got one so far.
Good.
Thank you, David, for that announcement. All right. Any other public comment?
One thing I've asked Ms. Harvey, I want to also say thank y'all for getting a really good LiDAR map. We appreciate that. The other map, I remember when we got that four-foot Enroll we used to have and we just had trouble checking that, especially in the woods. But I just want to say thank y'all for getting that map. Ms. Harvey, you know, I have to send in requests to get pieces of that. I was gonna ask if there's a way, other counties do this, if there's a way to come up with a price for like me or anybody to be able to buy the whole county to save me time and her time of, you know, taking, having to take requests, you know, piece by piece by piece. And, you know, I can, I can buy several other counties. But if y'all could come up with a price or something like that, we'd definitely, just, just consider it.
The only issue we got here is how we got, it came from June, Marcy? No. Came from the oil engineers.
Okay.
They furnished it to us when we redone the flood map. So I'm not sure if we can turn around and set it.
Well, okay.
That's a question, I don't know. We may can, but I don't know.
But if you want to give it to me.
No, no, no. No, 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 no.
But there's also, just with it, there's lots of notes and lots of waivers that we have to sign when we take the stuff off.
So, yes, if we'd have paid for it, we can say we fully own it.
I, I need to check them.
I got you.
Well, it's been a very huge benefit for the taxpayers all this time.
Thank you, Adrian, for that.
Thanks. You want to get taxed for the taxpayers, the ones that own it.
Okay. All right, any other public comment? If not, can we get a motion to adjourn and go into executive session?
I make a motion, we go into executive session personnel.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. All in favor? All in favor? It's five oh vote.